Good evening. In the meeting of the Newark City Council, please come to order. Would you all please join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Let the record show that all council members are present this evening. Item B is presentations and B1 is introduction of new employee. And I'm going to ask Jennifer Solito to please join me in the front. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Jennifer Solito. She's served as a human resources and risk manager for the Alameda County Water District for the past six years. Prior to her employment with Alameda County Water District, she worked for the Sonoma County Water Agency for a year and a half as their human resources manager and for the county of Sonoma for seven years as an analyst in the Human Resources Department and County Administrator's Office. Ms. Solito has a bachelor's degree in psychology from the University of California Davis and a master's degree in applied industrial organizational psychology from Colorado State University, as well as a certification in senior professional in human resources. Ms. Solito developed and implemented many new human resources programs during her tenure at ACWD, including a diversity, equity, and inclusion work plan, employee engagement surveys and resulting action plans, a district-wide training program including management supervisory training and general training for all staff, an employee wellness program, and revamped performance evaluation program. We look forward to Ms. Solito providing new and innovative programming for the city staff. In her spare time, Ms. Solito enjoys teaching group fitness classes, both online and through 24 Hour Fitness and New Park Mall, finding new activities to keep her rambunctious two-and-a-half-year-old son busy and continuing her search for the best chocolate chip cookie in the tri-city area. And when you find it, let me know. At this time, I'd like to introduce you again to Ms. Jennifer Solito. Jennifer?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. It's nice to meet you all tonight. I'm very excited to be here. I am a Newark resident, so very excited for this opportunity to serve the community where I live and work with all of you towards the future. Thank you.
Great, Jennifer, and congratulations on making a wise choice in employment. And we look forward to many years of your service for our city. Thank you. Okay, item C is public comment. For any items not listed on the agenda. For Zoom attendees, please use the raise your hand feature if you'd like to speak in, let's see, before we get too far along here. I'd like to mention again, for those participating via Zoom, when we get to the item that you want to speak on, please use the raise your hand feature and the city clerk will turn on your microphone to speak at the appropriate time. So, City Clerk Carrington, do we have anybody under public comment?
We do, Your Honor.
Can you tell me approximately how many people are?
We have 33 attendees and so far we have we have 10 requests currently to speak.
Your Honor, before we proceed, we do have a member of the public who would like to address this council who's present in the chambers, Dr. Bishop from Maloney College. Perhaps we should start with him before we move over to Zoom.
Okay, sure. Dr. Bishop? Welcome to Newark.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Eric Bishop, superintendent president of the Maloney College, and I'm happy to be able to introduce myself to you in person. I've seen some of the meetings via Zoom, but I wanted to take the opportunity to come and introduce myself. And I've been here about a year and a half now, and so it's a pleasure. I'm looking forward to continue our partnership in Newark and being part of the community. So I just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, the first speaker, please.
Spatial 315, you have five minutes.
Yes, I'd like to ask questions regarding that Home Key project in Newark.
Spatial 315, you have five minutes.
Yes, I had a question. Why is the city didn't inform everybody about turning the?
Please unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me now?
Maybe go to the next speaker.
John, you have five minutes. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, hello. My name is John. I've lived in Newark for over 30 years. And I just became aware after you voted that essentially you voted to create homeless and essentially low-income establishment right across the street from the Newark Memorial High School. And also just across from New Park Mall. Both of those are bad ideas, in my opinion, because the history of high-density, low-income, and public income, public essentially housing is very bad. It's almost universally 99% bad. Bad incomes, all that kind of stuff were essentially no-go areas for the rest of the society. So I don't know why you picked that. I cannot comment on it. But we are going to push, and I think we're essentially the thanks are builder. We are going to push with the state agency to essentially disapprove that application. We urge you to essentially not proceed with this because essentially, I don't know about you, but I'm 63 years old. I know a lot about society. I've studied a lot about society. The history of high-density public housing is very, very bad. And I just talked to essentially a pastor that works out in the Miles District, and he agreed that that is a very bad thing to have a essentially high-density homeless and low-income center right across from our public high school. So with that, I'll just conclude my opinions. I'm against it. I've got history with me since 1950s, and that's about it. I saved my confidence.
Next speaker.
Rose, you have five minutes.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So I strongly oppose this Home Key project. I have been, you know, Newark residents, you know, since last six years. I have lived in Cedar Lane Community, and the reason I'm coming today that I wanted to ensure that people can speak up their mind, it's their amendment of right. All of us have, you know, been raising this opposition since last three meetings. And I am again, I support the petition that has been filed. There is already 28, 2200 of signature that we have received through that petition. So I would encourage like to want everyone who is attending this meeting to speak up and, you know, raise the opposition because it's been really unfair to the residents the way it has been, you know, processed. And we are really surprised, you know, that Newark is moving forward with this proposal despite of, you know, all the opposition that, you know, people are raising. I mean, it's really unfair. I mean, the election is our like coming up. I mean, you really, you really need to hear residents' voice rather than making a forceful decision. It's really unfair to all the property taxpayers that, you know, we definitely wanted to help, you know, the homeless situation. We definitely wanted to help the low-income people. But, you know, it needs to be have a good agenda. So I would like to request Mayor and the opposition to the, and the council member to have this as an agenda for our meeting today or the next meeting. We really need to get this resolved as soon as possible. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Troy, you have five minutes.
Thank you. I'm a Newark resident, and I was wondering if we can learn more about the selection process for the residents in the project, the low-income project. Is it that the max that a resident can have in order to qualify is 44,400? And if that's so, I'm wondering firstly, what are we doing for the teachers? Most teachers make more than that, thankfully, and they wouldn't qualify for the low-income project, nor would even some civil servants such as emergency dispatchers. They make more than that also. So, you know, they need to make a little bit more than that. So I'm wondering, is it true that the max would only be 44,400? And after that, they wouldn't qualify?
Can we respond to that?
Mr. Turner, my recollection is this is 30% of AMI based on sliding scale in terms of number of inhabitants per unit. I'm not exactly sure what that calculation is. I sit here today. This item is not before us on the agenda. Mr. Turner, do you happen to know that off the top of your head?
No.
Okay.
So I see according to your website, April 1st, 2021, 44,400 would be the BMI for 30% household of five people. And also too, that would be for 44,400 would be about 45% for a single person, according to your website BMI. So, you know, thankfully, most people make more than that. But I'm wondering, can the, you know, has the board considered hitting a greater demographics and benefiting more people that, you know, a lot of civil servants, a lot of people that you guys work with make clearly more than that, yet they cannot, you know, they make under 86,000. And, you know, it's sort of hard to rent in this local area. And, you know, if we're not doing anything for the teachers, the emergency dispatchers, clerks, you know, it's like, you know, what can we do for them? Can we do anything for them besides just the homeless? You know, maybe 124 units, can we please allocate, you know, some to the homeless? That's great. Then some to the teachers, some to civil service. And then, you know, other BMR projects give civil servants priority for low-income rental. Can we have that for, you know, your fellow clerk workers?
Let me just say that we do have other programs besides this program. There's other below-market rate programs that the city is involved in. And as a matter of fact, there's, there's an application, I guess it's in process, for another 80 units at another location. So, but a different program. It's probably a little bit higher income levels. I'm going to stop here. Sorry, are you finished?
Yeah, I just want some clarification. If we could get that maybe in a written document, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll try to put that on the website for you.
Thank you.
Okay. So from what I see, we're going to have a large number of people speaking on this item tonight. And first of all, let me say that we appreciate any new information that people can provide. What I hate to hear over and over again is the same arguments or the same discussion, the same points being made by multiple speakers. I think it abuses everybody's time when you do that. What I would like to do is to go over some issues or some items that the people have brought up in the past and some misinformation about this project and try to clarify that. First of all, in the area of property values, there is no proof that property values will suffer. For the last several years, Newark has been at near or top of communities in Alameda County where the assessed value of homes has increased significantly. A recent study found that these developments next to housing had no material effect on property values. Notification, many people have stated time and again that there is no notification on this project. We didn't know. Well, let me tell you, that's incorrect. All residences within 500 feet of this proposed development were notified by letter of a community Zoom meeting that was beholden on November 10th. In addition, a new community meeting is planned, and homeowners within 500 feet of the proposed development will receive notices for that new meeting. Many people have asked, well, maybe the funds should be used for schools instead of homes. And the school district is a separate governmental agency with each having their own funding sources. School funding is used for schools and city funding is used for the city and services provided to our residents. Some people are saying we need more schools. Well, just the opposite is true. School enrollment has declined more than 50% in recent years in this community. Public safety is concerned over and over again about public safety. Well, we are a safe community. The city of Newark has always made the safety, security, and well-being of our residents as our top priority. As a matter of fact, the study from Los Angeles shows that crime is reduced in areas where these developments are. If the city had reason to believe there would be increased crime or security concerns as a result of this project, then we would not have allowed it. The statement, "The development is surrounded by homes," is incorrect. There is housing to the south, a few, and to the west, developments only. It was stated that Newark has no hospital. Well, Newark is part of the Washington Hospital District. In addition, we have urgent care and Washington Hospital clinics in Newark, and many of our residents are part of the Kaiser or Palo Alto Medical Facility family with multiple hospitals close by. Funding, the city's portion of funding comes specifically from an account where funds are designated for this purpose. These are not general fund dollars. This is an additional funding from impact fees collected from developers and that are specifically designated for projects like this. There is no oversight of residents. That argument has been made several times. Well, the opposite is true. The facility is going to be operated by five employees from Abode Services, which is a regional affordable housing provider. All residents will be screened through a background check process. They'll have to agree to Abode's rules in order to live there, and all of them will be required to pay rent. One half of the units will be reserved for those who experienced homelessness and will either be referred by the county through their intake process or through the Veterans Affairs Administration, our veterans. The other half will be reserved for those who are at risk of becoming homeless, and there will be a preference given for those who live or work in Newark. Abode is a well-known social service provider in the affordable housing field. They have been around for decades, and they manage to operate many affordable units throughout the Bay Area. You know, in closing, I would just say that Newark is a welcoming and a diverse community. And I think our diversity gives us strength as a community and allows us to better understand peoples from different lands, cultures, positions, and situations in life. And if, again, speakers succeeding this comments, I would ask that you provide any new information that would be helpful to us. So with that, I will ask again the next speaker.
Your Honor, if I just may add, we do have a future community meeting scheduled to discuss this matter on Wednesday, March 9th. It will be on Zoom, starting at 6:30 PM. I would encourage residents who want to learn more about the project and learn what this project really entails to attend that meeting. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Bucci?
I think that we have a number of new people tuning in tonight, and it would maybe be advantageous for you to explain again how the council is a little limited in our response during open comment because this isn't an agendized item and the entire public hasn't been notified that this is something we'd be discussing tonight. So in a lot of ways, that our hands are tied with having that kind of back-and-forth discussion with folks that were certainly listening, but I don't want them to feel ignored because we can't engage.
That's a very good point to Councilmember Bucci. But what the council member refers to is an item in the Brown Act, which specifies how meetings are conducted. And the idea being that under oral communications, this is a time for the public to give input to the city council or to the board that they're speaking before. It's not a time for discourse on, back-and-forth discourse on the subject. It's a time for us to hear, to listen, and consume basically what you're saying. But we are limited in our ability to respond to questions. I've probably already exceeded my ability or my purpose, I guess, in doing that. So, so again, I would, you know, I think we had that explanation at the last meeting through our city attorney, but it's a very good point, Mr. Bucci. So it's not that we don't want to respond to your questions or your concerns. It's that we are limited and you can, if you leave contact information, we can get in touch with you and, you know, and try to follow up on the questions that you may have. Okay. Oh. Okay.
I just want to also advise that I believe the city has prepared a fact sheet of frequently asked questions, and I believe that's currently on our website. And I believe that those are questions that have been raised over the last few weeks that the public might find helpful in looking at some of the information that's provided through that fact sheet. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next speaker.
Matthew, you have five minutes.
Hello. My name is Matthew Hoffman. Been a resident of Newark for over 35 years. I just want to note as well that I oppose the project Home Key. My main reason is for safety. I heard you guys before mention Newark is a safe place. Well, I guess not, not in this area where you're planning to put this. There are constant car break-ins. There are business windows being smashed in on a daily basis. And I just don't feel that this would get any better with putting more people in this area. There's already about six homeless people that go around the food max area. Adding more would be just a bigger safety concern. And the other thing, I guess I'm a little upset with that you mentioned the sneakiness of this. I live less than two blocks away, and I guess I didn't fall in that 500-feet parameter. So I think that also should be extended. I mean, you're talking about, it's about 150 yards that all that is. That's not, that's not very much distance. So I just want to note, it's already unsafe. In my gated community, there's more and more people walking around within the gate because they don't feel comfortable walking outside the gate. Adding this is just going to make it worse for people. People are going to be afraid to leave their homes. So I just want to state that I oppose this, and I think this should be added to the agenda for the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Patrick, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and residents in Newark. I understand the point that the mayor is making about not reiterating points that were made previously about security, so I won't do that. I will just note that I am opposed to this Home Key Hotel project. I was really surprised to learn about this project online by accident since I don't recall receiving any formal notice about it in the mail despite living across the street in New Park Village. I agree with the previous speaker that the 500-foot radius that was selected was, I don't think, very wise. Honestly, if you take that radius to 1,000 feet, you'd probably get all of New Park Village and the Marietta neighborhood. It's not a huge area that's adjacent to this project, but within that area is pretty densely populated residential community that could be impacted by this project. So I just wanted to voice my opinion, opposition to this project, and I thank the council for their time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Debbie, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name's Andrew Chow, and my wife, Huan Liu. We both oppose this. We both oppose this amendment to proceed with the Home Key. And in within our neighborhood, you know, we have numerous young children, not to mention preschool that's adjacent to the proposed venue to house this project.
And I'm very surprised to find that online instead of receive any information about this project. And that is approved. That's a thing very surprised me. We did not know anything till we saw it on Facebook, online, everywhere else, not the ready for city.
So we'd just like to make it record with the clerk that we oppose this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Rainu, you have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Rainu, and I'm also a resident of the Newark area. I live outside this 500-mile, 500-feet radius. And I'm too disappointed that I was not informed. Being a resident of Newark, this is a very small city, and I would think that anything that affects one part of the community would affect the larger community as well. I also oppose this Home Key project. Again, I think prioritizing this over a lot of other things that could be prioritized, you know, is kind of an issue for me. The schools themselves have a 37-to-1 ratio and being shut down, and that's not a priority. But it sounds like this is more of a priority than that. So I do oppose this project, and then I also wonder how, what's going to happen when all the funds run out? You know, how is this going to be managed long-term? And I think, again, we were not given enough information. The larger community, there's tens of thousands of people that live in the community, and it sounds like there's barely any people that know about it. So that is quite disappointing. I'd like to make sure that this is added to the next agenda item for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Samir, you have five minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm also opposed to this project from the mayor. And I think, Mayor, you need to listen to what the residents of Fremont, residents of Newark are trying to tell you something. I'm also, I want to start a family, and I don't feel comfortable with this homeless project near the home. So close to the home, and I live right outside the 500-feet radius of the notices that you sent out. I didn't hear anything about it in the mail that the city was planning to do this. And without, you know, getting input from residents, how are you able to just approve it without getting input from the residents? See if they actually want this in their neighborhood or not. There's a kindergarten, preschool there, there's a high school. What is the city going to do when one of the homeless person goes into the high school and does something to the students? Is the city going to take responsibility for it? I mean, we could use this funds on for public safety, like, you know, providing, paying better to our police officers, our firefighters who work in the city, city employees. So it's just not fair that, you know, you guys approved this without getting input from the residents. And this goes to the mayor, and Mayor, you need to start listening to the people who live in the city because they're the one paying property taxes and paying your salary. I relinquish the rest of my time. I relinquish, relinquish rest of my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Y C Chung, you have five minutes. Y C, please unmute yourself. You have five minutes.
All right, about that. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, so I also oppose this shelter being right next door to us. I literally live in the Cedar Lane Association, which is right next door to us. There is a hundred and eighty-six homeowners here. None of us received this notice. It was by accident that one of our homeowner discovered it and gave us a notice on it. It didn't come from you. It came from one of our homeowners. And then also, in terms of home value, it will affect our home value. I've been selling real estate for twenty-six years now, and now we all have to disclose when we sell our home. There is this shelter right next door, this homeless shelter, that is going to affect our value. So you can't say that our values are not affected. Had I known that this was going to be coming in place, I would have never bought here, period. So thank you for listening.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. X, you have five minutes.
Kaloki, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Dear council members, my name is Alan Chi, and I am opposed to the Home Key Project in Newark. I would like the city to add this topic to the next meeting's agenda. Yesterday, the city emailed a frequently asked questions FAQ regarding the project. The Town Place Marriott is a one hundred twenty-five unit hotel that can generate about an average of three hundred dollars a night per room during normal times. Assuming a seventeen percent vacancy rate, the tax revenue generated is more than a million dollars a year. The fact does not disclose the approximately one million dollars in lost tax revenue. This is a wonderful hotel that is within easy driving distance of customers in the form of hospitals, Tesla, and Facebook HQ. This million dollar loss of revenue and subsequent drain on our resources does not include the lost tax sales, does not include the lost sales tax revenue from the nearby retail district that could have been selling goods and services to a captive audience of travelers eager to spend money. To reiterate, instead of making a million dollars for our police and schools, we will not only be taking that million dollars away, but also spending funds on a homeless shelter when the state funds run out. How is that fair for the people who can't afford private school for their kids, who are not privileged enough to work from home, who work late at night when it's dangerous? This is not a myth. This is the cold, hard economics of trading out a hotel for Home Key. This is incredibly irresponsible, especially when compared against the city budget, which states, quote, "Economic impacts from COVID- nineteen have caused the city to make significant budgetary adjustments to face the anticipated multimillion dollar shortfall." These measures include significant reductions in citywide supplies and contractual services. These reductions were made in anticipation of continued dramatic declines in three revenue sources: sales tax, hotel tax, and charges for city services, end quote. That is from the city budget. We cannot afford to convert a perfectly good hotel that is a money maker into a money burner. Instead of an honest debate about this reality, the city's position is so weak that it instead does not disclose this information in the FAQ. That is not a myth, that is a fact. It is not disclosed. As to why we should support the Home Key Project, the FAQ spends two unsupported sentences on why people are homeless, without any mention to mental illness and drug abuse, one of the top reasons, according to the National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty. According to Addiction Center and Addiction Health and Recovery Organization, about thirty-three percent of homeless are mentally ill, and about forty percent abuse drugs. The city is intentionally hiding these facts. They don't want us to know that a large proportion of mentally ill drug addicts will be imported near our homes, schools, and daycares. Finally, the people of Newark never had a fair say regarding this project. This thirty-nine million dollar project, in which serious consequences, such as a reduction of one million dollars a year in lost tax revenue, was never considered by the voters. The voters never had a say. The city council was not elected to support this project, and the people of Newark strongly oppose this project. Today, we already have twenty-two hundred signatures on our petition. That is almost enough votes to, to vote for replacements for all three city council members coming up for election this November. There's only five seats, everyone. Three out of five, we can win it. All of these, all of these people, all of these twenty-two hundred people were organized in just a few weeks, which included New Year's holiday. Again, three out of five city council members are up for election this November, and it is important to replace all of them to stand a chance at undoing the lasting damage that would be caused by taking a hotel offline and replacing it with a homeless shelter. I urge people to fight for your neighborhoods and city. Please join us by signing the petition. Just Google change dot O R G Newark Home Key, and you will also receive updates on how to volunteer. We have prepared flyers and organized route maps, and you can answer, and we can also answer some of your questions. Remember, we are volunteers too, so we won't be wasting our time. We love this city, and we will fight for it. Remember this, if their cause was just, they would not intentionally omit important information from the FAQ and push so quickly for the project's completion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tariq, you have five minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I was calling in regarding this homeless situation that's going on in the city of Newark. I do live in the city of Newark. I'm a homeowner in the city of Newark, and I oppose this project. I find it a little bit insulting that the mayor, you would say something as far as we don't want to hear the same thing over and over again. That is not the purpose of this kind of Zoom meeting. That's, that's why you have this public section for us to voice our opinion. By you saying that, you're ultimately silencing everybody from saying what they want to say and pushing them away from the city of Newark. The city of Newark, these are million dollar homes that are here in the city of Newark. Every single resident pays substantial amount of money on property tax to live in this city. We want to see, see the city go in a positive direction, but also we want to make sure our elected officials are really taking into consideration what the residents of this city are saying. Our taxpayers are paying for everything that's happening here. By you driving residents away, that's going to depreciate the value of this city. And I know the city of Newark has worked really hard to make sure that it is a safe city. We have how many cops that patrol four hundred streets, four to five cops on a shift patrolling the cities? The city of Newark severely understaffed here in the police department. I live on a street that I hear the police going up and down, and I could understand that there is not enough police force in the city of Newark. Again, you're also impacting the fire department. If one of these individuals are using drugs, or if they're doing something, and you have the fire department that needs to be called out, what about the other situation or other emergency responses that needs to happen across the city? Are you implementing a new firehouse? Are you implementing hiring new fire, firefighters? Are you going to add more police force on there and reduce the strain that's on the police force right now? These are all the things that the city, that the residents of the city should and we want to know. And the five hundred feet radius of that is quite insulting for me as a homeowner in the city of Newark. For you to only do just the bare minimum, that clearly shows that you're really not thinking about the folks in the city of Newark. Because if you want to do your due diligence and really want to support this and get this in a positive way, you would have sent it out to the entire city saying, hey, look, the, this is what the city is looking to do, and we're going to make a change. But by keeping it so undercover and low-key and not having everybody aware of it is causing a lot of concern. And the lack of information that you're sharing is another reason why there's so many concerns going on right now. Transparency is huge. As an elected official, we would expect you to have transparency, but unfortunately, that wasn't provided. I'm, I'm sure that you guys have a plan. Share that with the residents. Make it very aware of what your plan is. I do oppose this project, and I do want it on the next state council agenda. Mainly, I want to know about the operation cost of this. What happens after state funding runs out? What happens after the federal funding runs out? What are we doing regarding the police force? What are we doing with the, regarding our first responders, the fire department? What are these things that we are looking to do? And also, the other thing is the impacts of the neighborhood. What safety measures are being taken place to ensure that these kids that are in the daycares in that, in the single, only high school in the city that is less than what, a block or two away from this place? What is the safety for them? And preventing someone going onto the property and causing harm to a student? As a parent, my child will be going to that high school, and that is a huge concern for me. So please, again, I do oppose this project. I would like it added on the next agenda, mainly for operation costs after the state and federal funding runs out. And also looking at the impact that it's going to have on our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ashley M., you have five minutes.
Hello, I'm Ashley's husband. I'd like to say that I oppose this plan that everybody here is speaking about. And I, hearing that the notices were sent within the five hundred feet radius, I'm definitely within the five hundred feet radius. I'm on Cedar Lane. I walk to my mailbox, and the hotel is there. I can see it. We share, our community shares a fence with this hotel where the planned conversion is happening. And then I have not heard anybody in my community having a notice. And then five hundred feet probably includes Marietta and also some, doesn't run there. We walked around, we have, we have formed a group, and then nobody has received a notice. So my question to you is, who'd you send it to? That is all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Pei Li, you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Pei Li, and I'm the resident of Newark. And first of all, I just wanted to state again that we never received any notice from the city. And I don't really understand why the mayor kept saying that he sent out, why didn't you do any investigation? When, and let us know, when did you send out in evidence that he sent out? And second, I wanted to say again that I oppose this project. And I think, Mayor, you should be ashamed of saying that you hate to hear the same points again and again. You know why people actually said that the same points again and again? Because that's how truly we all felt. Okay, why didn't you want to hear people saying the truth? And I think a lot of statements you made, they're so fake and not honest. And I never really thought about getting into the politics in the past, but by listening to you, I think it's so bad to have politicians like you to be in the position to have power. And I will do everything that I can do to take you away from that disposition. That's all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Rajesh, you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Rajesh. I'm a newer president, and I live just five hundred feet close to this project. And first of all, I strongly oppose to this Home Key Project that is being proposed by the city. And like I said, I just live five hundred feet close to the, you know, this proposed plan, and I haven't received any notice that that respected mayor has mentioned, like on this call. And I'm kind of concerned on that part, because not me. You know, several other people have said the same thing, that we have not been notified. And this is a blatant disregard from what we expect, what we as residents expect from the city, because of the main reason that we, we pay all the property taxes, and we really want to know any, any of this big proposal where the city is spending like thirty million dollars for the, you know, for this homeless project. We want to be notified in the first place, and be very notified. And that is, that statement is common across the people who have discussed in the call. Not to mention the safety and the security, which we have been telling over and over and over on this call. And, and there has been a lot of questions that we have asked in the, in the previous, at least three calls that I have joined, and no clear answers has been there from the mayor or from this call. It's just that we keep asking all these questions, and no answers have been returned in, you know, in return. And one of the main questions that has been asked by everyone is that, what is the plan? Like, what, what would happen if, if the budget runs out? Is that, like, is that a backup plan? And most, and the foremost thing is about the transparency. Nothing is very clear, and this goes over and over and again. It just creates frustration for all the Newark residents here because of the transparency part. And definitely, this, this has to be in the next, in the next agenda. But I would have expected this be the agenda in this call or the previous call, because of so many people have been, you know, dissatisfied with this, you know, with the, like, with approach here. So again, I would want to reiterate that this has to be on the agenda item, and this has to be discussed in detail about it, so that people are aware of what is going on, instead of doing it in the, you know, like, this just looks like things are being done under the carpet. And that's not, we expect, we expect a lot of transparency from, from the city and from the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Shivani, you have five minutes.
Hi, this is Shivani's husband, Goro. I live in Sedal Land Community, which is, which is less than five hundred feet away from this Home Key Project proposal. And we haven't received any communication about this project. And, and we have been hearing it through our community member, who brought to the attention that this is what is coming. We are severely concerned about the safety of our kids who will be going to the school next to this project. And I am totally in oppose to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ruth Vic, you have five minutes.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So first of all, again, I oppose the project. And one of my primary reasons to oppose it is when I was part of the original meeting where they presented the Home Key Project and the details. The presentation was very, very limited. It did not cover a lot of things. And for example, which locations were considered in place of this? You know, what's the opportunity cost for this? A lot of, what's the impact on homelessness? What's the impact on the surrounding area? You know, bringing studies in, pointing those out, that here is the impact we expect in terms of real estate property prices, et cetera, et cetera. So, but, and what I feel is a common theme over here is a lot of people, you know, are, you know, we basically need to come up with a proper template of passing such, or showing such presentations to the larger community of Newark. And for example, you know, this template will have specifics of this is what slide, these, these are the content details that we need to cover before approving such a project, right? Also, I believe that the radius of five hundred feet is, is not correct. A lot of people nearby aren't able to even get that particular pamphlet. And it should be in the monthly newsletter that is shown out, shared with all the citizens of Newark. And what I would like to also know that are the steps that the, that the city citizens could take to oppose this. And I, I've been part of these communications for past three, three times now, and I feel And I feel that there's no clear path on what we can do, what power we have as citizens to oppose and change this decision. Which, again, a lot of people are against it, right? So uh that, that's it. I'll really appreciate if someone can point me, do the FAQs have this? Or if not, is there a website that can have it, that has it? Or and, you know, we'll appreciate if anyone of you can share me all the details that I asked. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tiffany, you have five minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, um I just wanted to say that I really support this. And I think that all the people who oppose it should be honestly disgusted with themselves. I think it's great that the mayor is allowing people who are houseless to have an opportunity. And I think people need to realize that it's not just about people who are on the streets for drugs and whatnot, mental health issues. It's also for families with children. You guys are all worried about your kids. These people also have children. And they need proper, you know, help with low income housing. It is not a halfway house. It's low income housing. And they need help and support because as you could tell and you're all worried about your property values. It's really hard. It's really expensive to live here. Being someone who is young, I understand that. And I really think that the mayor is doing a great job and you guys should all be like more considerate. You're all worried about, oh, I didn't get this message. You should probably pay attention more because he said he sent it out. And I wouldn't want to sit there, you wouldn't want to sit there and listen to things said over and over and over again when there are basic facts out there. And it's not just for houseless people. It is for people who need help. And you shouldn't be worried about the streets. The school next to it is a charter school. You have to pay thousands of dollars to get into it. The high school is well taken care of with police officers. The officers do a great job here in Newark. So you shouldn't be worried about any of that because our officers will take care of us. Okay, thank you. 12. And you should all just be really ashamed of how selfish you're being. Because as a community, we should worry about who's on our streets and how we can get them off. Because everybody deserves a house, a place to live, and the support of a community. So thank you council members for doing this. I hope you do more projects like this. And I hope everybody can come together as a community and support each other. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tiffany. Next speaker, please.
Jay, you have five minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Jay and I'm resident of Newark. I live less than 500 feet away from the proposed Home Key Project. I never received the notification about the project. And until I read in the newspaper in January 13th, that's when I got to know. So it seems there was no transparency. I oppose this project as I'm concerned about the safety and whether or not the city budget can afford this project. I'm requesting that the Home Key Project be added to the agenda of, for the next city council meeting. There is no good hospitals in Newark, not enough cops, as we are having package thefts, issues on daily basis. Why, why don't you want to focus on it? It, it's a growing community need and this project is going to negatively impact us and our livelihood. There are three daycares, two schools within one minute distance. How will you ensure, ensure security to them and the communities next door? And if there is a plan, why this agenda was kept hidden that none of us received any notification? We are living just next door. Why, why are you, and also why are you stopping people to speak even on Zoom call by saying that if you have same comment as earlier folks and skip it? That's insulting. At the same time, we send something is not right or something is being hidden. So, so many people are opposing this project and you are elected city official. Why are you not stopping this project? You are, you are sitting there to serve the people of the city. But your action is not in fear of the people or not in fear of the city. Have, have you done any sort of, any, any sort of risk assessment? Or have you assessed any like impact that this project will bring to neighbors? How many homeless shelter have not negatively impacted the neighborhoods across the San Francisco and San Jose? Did you, do, do you have that data? And you need to think about this again when large amount of people are opposing it. Again, I oppose this project and I request that the Home Key Project to be added to the agenda for the next city council meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Andy, you have five minutes.
Hi, this is Akshay. I'm Andy's husband. So like I stay right next to the hotel. I think we share the ball. And I guess like somebody living in the hotel will also see my wifi range coming in right there. I stay so close. And I have never received any flyer or any notification that the, about this Home Key Project in past. I just came to know from the news and from the Facebook, like a few of my friends shared it. So that is kind of a big surprise for me. And looking at this whole picture, right? It seems to be that a lot of things have happened under the table. Just to make sure that there is not too much chaos in the city. And then even though in the previous meeting, everybody opposed it except for a few handful of people. Still without anything, the city decided to go ahead and approve the whole project, which was also surprising. The third thing that I would like to speak about is yesterday itself, I saw a news of, in Yahoo that in San Jose, there is, the city has allocated an area where they are, they are building tiny homes right from scratch. And that area is like kind of isolated away. And that is only meant for homeless people. These homes are self-sufficient, right? So city like San Jose can think of such than why a city of like Newark can't think of such things, right? It's, it's, it's really good to have, I know, you shelter to homeless people. But why can't you find such areas in Newark, right? Which are, which are kind of isolated, which are like away from the regular crowd. And another thing that I would like to say is like every city, in every city if you go, there are few areas where the real estate is high and there are a few areas where the real estate isn't that high. I mean, rents and all aren't that there. For example, in San Jose, if you see the area near Alm Rock, right? It is not that expensive. You will find apartments for pretty cheap, like maybe like $1,000 or so. But if you go to North First Street where all the companies are there or where like the most of the crowds stay near Mel Peters, you will see the rents are pretty high, like 2,500 to 3,000 for a bedroom. So why did Newark City chose a area which is like a prime location in Newark? So that, let's say, if I'm staying there, I'm paying a rent of 2,500 versus my labor is just paying like few, few hundred dollars just, just because of the homelessness or just because of the low income. So and again, I'm, I'm not against low income. Yes, low income. There should be some, some plans for the low income people. But for homeless people, I don't, I don't think this is just the right place. It was a great initiative, no doubt, but absolutely a wrong place. And another thing I would like to ask this to mayor, that mayor mentioned that they did a survey on basis of and to find out if the real estate price go down. Can you also in the next meeting, please share that what kind of survey was done? Because right now, if you just Google, right? It will tell you that if there is a homeless shelter right next to your home, the home price is gonna fall by seven to 10%. So I, I'm not sure what survey the mayor was talking about. Would be great if you can share it in your next, uh next meeting. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Raza, you have five minutes.
Oh yeah, my name is Raza Jafri and I am a resident of Newark. Like other people before me, I am just voicing my concern over the Home Key Project. I am against it. And I wanted to be a part of the agenda in the next meeting. And I also wanna voice my disappointment. On the first time we joined the meeting, we actually informed the council members that this was something that was being rushed. And we found out about it that that very day from a news article. And the council members did not really, they went ahead with the vote and unanimously approved this project without answering any of our concerns or without showing any evidence that they have done due diligence. So yeah, the presentation was lacking. There was no, we still don't know how the things are, what, what, how are you, how are you going to pay for the ongoing costs? Do we have medical staff or not? Because homeless people, they need a lot of mental support. And are we gonna provide that or not? So my, that's, that's my question. And that is a big concern. And we are not against, I mean, people, some people are saying that we are being calloused and we just don't care about people. That is not true. We are just against the way, the solution that you guys are choosing is wrong in our opinion. It's not that we're against the people. We are just, we just don't agree with the way this is being solved. There are multiple ways you can solve this issue and we don't agree with it. So please don't give us a lecture of how we're being careless and we're just worried about our property value. That's not true. We care about people as much as you do. So the, the only concern we have is we just disagree on how to solve this problem. We agreed the problem. We just need to come up with a better way, maybe more transparency. We were not informed. I've talked to many, many people. They were not informed and they live right next to the proposed site. So please put this on the agenda. And I, I would like to see more transparency from the, from the council members going forward. And I honestly, I also want to know if any other companies were asked for a bit, two bit again for this project besides a boat, because that's the, that's the impression that we're getting is, it's just a boat running the show. So um, thank you very much for giving me the time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jessica, you have five minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, um thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak. I actually live like 30 feet away from this new proposed project. I'm not opposed to helping low income families at all. I think it's a great thing because I used to be low income. However, I do want to express that I am offended by the mayor's comments about hearing the same thing over and over again. I think everybody should be afforded the opportunity to speak. And does, even if I want to support these people, I think that the previous presentations were lacking. We weren't given enough information. What's gonna happen when the funding runs out? Are these poor families gonna be evicted? What's gonna happen? And can you provide mental health support for these homeless people that might be sheltering here? And not only that, I do want to reiterate that I think it is untrue that you notified everybody within 500 feet because I live 30 feet away and never received any notice until this news story was shared to us by our neighbors. So, you know, I do have real concerns for safety and security. Even if I do support, supporting low income families, you still have to give us enough information to be able to support this project. And I think that if you're not being transparent about something as simple as sending a letter, then what else are you hiding from us, you know, as a community? Like ultimately, yes, we want to help these people, but you need to be transparent about how exactly you're going to help them. What's gonna happen when the funding runs out? How are you gonna provide mental health and health support and security support and public safety support? Not just to this community, but to the surrounding all of Newark. And you know, it's, it's just a matter of transparency. So I do want to voice my real concerns about transparency from the council. And I do want to also express my being offended that you would treat the citizens of Newark this way. Even if we do support this project, in some ways, you need to respect all of us as, as fellow neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Caitlin, you have five minutes.
Hello, I would just like to say that I strongly support this project. I feel that the lack of compassion shown here by others in our community and those who are commenting is absolutely astounding. We see the homeless people every day driving around our city firsthand. And a previous speaker mentioned six people by Food Max alone. And yet so many oppose helping them because of false fears that are unsupported by any facts and are those repeating the same uneducated opinions over and over again, like our mayor stated previously. Those will go through background checks and be paying rent, becoming active members of our community and contributing into the economy by having access to jobs they previously didn't. You cannot get a job without an address. This would be the first step in their process to getting back into our community. This is not a shelter, but low income housing that offers resources to those in need and those who do not have the privilege of having a high earning job, the ability to go buy Tesla or access to higher education like so many speaking most likely do. The stigma surrounding homeless people is so negative and dehumanizing. And that stigma has been perpetuated throughout this meeting. They are people who deserve an opportunity to become members of our Newark community and should not all be labeled and seen as addicts or criminals. Newark has not always been a community with these million dollar homes, high property values, luxury condos. And many people are forgetting that there are plenty of people who currently live in our city, families who are currently at risk of homelessness because of new developments in recent years. I agree that this topic should be put on the next agenda to educate those who seem to be blinded by fear and only concerned about their property value. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Larry, you have five minutes.
Hi, thank you. This is Larry and I just wanted to share a brief story about myself. So I, I heard both pros and cons from people that just spoke. And I just want to share a little bit. So I grew up in a low income family where we were a family of four in a one bedroom home in Los Angeles. So I moved to Newark from Los Angeles where I lived there previously for 35 years. So I've seen firsthand how a homeless shelter can affect the community. And so I want to say just a few things where I'm coming from experience living and growing up there. And I, looking even at the pros and cons of this, I do oppose of how this was brought up. I believe there's a better way to, to accomplish the goal. If, if what you're trying to get to is to support low income family, there's I think better way to do that. If we look at, couldn't we just as the city of Newark, look at other cities that have gone through the same thing like LA and learn from their mistakes instead of trying to repeat the, the same ones, right? So when I was in LA, you know, homeless population is over 63,000 right now. They had to pass a few propositions, for example, Proposition HHH, which was a $1.2 billion bond measure to, that was passed in 2016 to support that. And then even more recently, it was a Measure H in 2017 that we had to increase our county sales tax so that we could fund and support the continued homeless service. So I've seen firsthand where I, I think a lot of residents pointed out a good thing here, which is like, hey, we should all take a look at the full thing, like both pros and cons and really do some research and, and look at the data and learn from other cities that, that have implemented this and take their learnings and, and go about it that way. I just would like to make a suggestion to the council chamber that you help pull all this data together and then put this as a vote to the residents of Newark. I'm hearing a lot of residents oppose this and I believe the right thing to do is look at the trade offs, let them form an opinion and let them vote on it. I listened in on the previous call and I was, I kept quiet. I was just listening in. And it really, I got the impression that the council members had their minds made up already. Didn't answer any questions that the residents have and just unanimously approved it. I, I moving here, here in Newark, I lived here now for two years now. I would have hope that the council members would represent us, show us the data, right? And then let us all form an opinion and let us vote on it. Because this is not a $40 project. It's not a $400 project. It's a $40 million project. And we should look at all the data that's available. And we should look at all the data that's available, even look at our neighbor city in Fremont where a boat has brought up two projects there. Can we look at some data there? I drove by the Fremont Boat Services and next to Autozone. And I saw a lot of graffiti that were left up. So I was wondering, you know, did we budget in, you know, that budget to help us remove graffiti? Is that, was that factored in? You know, could we, I think you guys can just drive five minutes across Fremont and take a look yourself there as well. So that's just my feedback. I really hope the city council members really hear our, the residents here acknowledge it and actually let us give you guys some opinions on how do we make this program better and let us vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. Next speaker, please.
Ayann, you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Nadia. I'm Ayann's mom. I would like to oppose this project. We just live next to like within fifty feet away. And we are very close community. We look out for each other. We never received any such communication in a mail. Else there are like as mentioned by my previous resident that we have one hundred and eighty houses and none of us, none, not a single person. If we would have got, got it at that time, we would have reacted at the same time, not like now. After receiving it from, doing it from the news that was posted while ago. So I really oppose this project. Yes, I would like to put this on the agenda for the next meeting. My concern is, is next to the, next to the high school. That's my main concern. I have two kids. We used to go out and play whole pandemic. I was outside playing with the neighbor's kid. But now I'm not very comfortable letting my kids play outside on their own or within like, even if I'm out, I'm not feeling very comfortable. So I would really oppose this project and please put this on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chirag, you have five minutes.
Hello, hey, thank you, council member for giving us an opportunity to raise our concerns. So I just have a couple of things to bring up. As previous couple of speakers ahead who mentioned that they, they are really think that we are going against and talking about like, oh, this is against the homeless people. It's not that. We understand the concern. We agree that that needs to be something done for homeless people. But and the location is not right. There are multiple reasons for it. And I, this aboard came and presented, they, they practically did not present any information regarding school nearby, daycare nearby, nothing like that. They omitted those information, which is very crucial when you're putting this kind of facilities in the area. Second thing is, if you know, aboard is the only one, what, when they're saying, you know, we send the flyers. How come nobody, like there are this many people on phone and people are from every community around this, that facility. And nobody in nearby community has received any letters regarding mentioning of turning this project. So if you're, they're saying that they informed the community, means they practically and deliberately did not inform the community which are exactly going to get impacted. So there is definitely something under the table and fishy going on to kind of like particularly eliminating people who.
Sir, I don't know what kind of technology you're using, but you're coming across the council chambers here in a very, I guess, unheard of way.
Okay, can you hear me properly now?
Can you, can you either slow down or change something there?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
A lot better.
Okay, yeah. So what I previously are just like deliberately, I think the people from the surrounding communities were misinformed. They did not send them letters knowing, like informing that this facility is coming along. Because nobody in the surrounding community has come up and said that, oh, we got the letters. Like, and how come they say, oh, we sent it to five hundred people or whatever the people and nobody from surrounding community got a single letter? That's something definitely fishy and needs to be looked at. And my last point, which is the very crucial point, Newark has one high school. Okay, one high school. We don't have like multiple high schools. So yeah, it has to be near one high school or something. We have one high school where kids, I frequently see cross country kids running on the street, doing the runs. Kids go to the high schools, which are teenager boy, boys and girls. And near the only high school in Newark, you're creating this facility. Means I think, you know, if you think through about this project, it shows the telltale sign that this is wrong, like only one high school. How can you create something where kids are walking to the schools? Where it's only one and only high school in Newark? And you're creating a facility which is walking distance away from that school. So I think choosing the area of the facility is, I think, it's really flawed. I think people are just kind of, you know, just picking the project, getting under the table and passing it along and just getting it done to get government grant or whatever it is. But this is not the right location to put a facility for simple reason of proximity from the schools of Newark. Newark don't have that many schools and this is in proximity of those schools. Be it elementary school and be it high school. It's not that far from any of them. And that's not the really right location to build this kind of facilities. It's a simple thoughtful, I think, consideration that council members, people who are working on this program should have looked at ahead of time, which deliberately, and even in the presentation, I found out that it's deliberately miss, like omitted information because they didn't want to mention about it. So I think those are my very concern that like, you know, high school is right walking distance where teenager kids, boys and girls go there. They are running on the street doing for their cross country trainings and all those things. And this is really hazardous location for them to do all those activities if this facility builds in that area. So I think that has to be considered. And I really wish that this would have come up as a project like, hey, what does the community think about it? Can we put it on the ballot to vote on it? Where do you commit to think which is right location? Let's put it like, we want to build one. Where do you think we should build? Have community voice in there. There is no community voice in this decision. It's a decision made by.
Your time has expired.
Okay, yeah. So thank you. But I think I hope.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Sam, you have five minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Give one moment. So just give me one second, setting up my recording. Okay, I am a resident and homeowner of Newark for almost twenty years now. And I would like to join everyone who preceded me in opposing this proposed project. The, at, at the former Chase Suites Hotel. I also would like to echo everyone's sentiments. And I would like to notate that I believe the biggest take I have on this is number one, the proximity to the high school. I also would like to comment on a couple items that the mayor mentioned. He said Newark is safe. I think safe is a relative term. I think nowadays probably nowhere is safe. We all watch the news and we know what's going on and what we hear daily. I just want to state that I don't feel as safe now in Newark as I used to. I'm going to state just few recent incidents. On late July of twenty twenty one, in our community, a house was being remodeled. It was broken into, tools were stolen. And two days later, at two AM, the thieves came back and we confronted them and we chased them. So two hits within almost seventy two hours in late July twenty twenty one. In January fourteen, we had people walking in our parking lot trying to open cars. Four days later, on January eighteen, at eight AM, we had people walking and conducting Porsche pilots, basically stealing packages in the morning at eight AM. And at just two days ago, on the ninth of February. So that's three basically incidents within less than a month's time. We had yet another person in the parking lot. And what's common often is they're wearing hoodies, they have a backpack. We have them on video. And I've sent this video to the city of Newark police. I'll be happy to share it with anybody who wants it. And so again, I mean, what is going to happen? Somebody said that this is going to add additional pressure to an already sin stretch police force. Sometimes police response is not as fast as one would hope. And they say, well, we're, we're dealing with a theft at the other side of the town. I think the number of the police officers that cover the city of Newark is the bare minimum. And I think the police, you know, God bless their heart and protects them. I, we appreciate everything they do for us. But I think they, they can use every help they can. And if you guys are doing this and saying, well, we could still absorb this with the police force we have, there's no way. That's just unrealistic. And no, I mean, Newark is safe per the mayor's statement. Again, I would say nowhere is safe nowadays, but definitely Newark is not as safe as it used to be. And I don't feel as safe as when we moved in here twenty years ago. Things are changing. Somebody mentioned like around the Foodmax area, you see all kinds of individuals. And those individuals sometimes standing in the middle of the road as if they are just waiting to be hit by a car sadly. The mayor also said this will not affect property values. I don't know, like somebody said they did a Google search and it said that on average, it goes down by seven percent as a simple Google search. I don't know. I mean, when, when he says what, what study he's basing it, I'm not saying he's lying. Probably there's something that backs it up, but probably there's ten different studies. One of them said this and maybe nine said the other thing, maybe. So again, I, I'll take that with a very big grain of salt. But I will tell you, if I was today to buy in an area in a city and if there is a such project in close proximity to the to, to the property I'm looking into, I'd probably look elsewhere. So, and again.
Your time has expired.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Jack, you have five minutes.
Oh, thank you. My name is Jack Jiang. I oppose this Home Key project due to, you know, mainly safety issue, but also lack of detailed management and a budget plan after maybe the next five years. I strongly recommend this issue to be added to the agenda of next meeting and put this plan on hold right now. So I'm, I'm living within exactly five hundred feet distance. But I have never ever received this so called email notification or any kind of notification. I have picked up and checked all mails, but know nothing about this before this project was even approved. So we need not just some education website, but respectful and transparent feedback. And once built, I believe this site would become like a black hole absorbing and attracting homeless people from, from all over the place, not only from Newark. So what, what's your, your plan and management measures if every room have been occupied? But more homeless, but still more homeless people still coming to gather around the site. Even our dear police officer can do nothing until some, maybe some terrible things happen. So does our police department have enough fun to circle around and around this set all the time? I, I, I think it's impossible, right? And also what's the detailed plans in the management for the next ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years after that? So after the current budget runs out, do you still provide any support for these people? Do you still have mental health support for these people? I do know this project is not only about homeless, but also some, also people with low income. I have no issues with anyone trying their best to afford their families. And I really agree that we need to find a solution for these people. But approving this very premature plan without any transparency is unacceptable. I, I think democracy is not about gavending in the shadow. Everything must be put in the sunshine. And we have rights to know and say before you make any decisions. Yeah, this, sorry, just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Speaker, you have five minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, hi, I would really thank for giving the opportunity to speak here. I think I want to oppose this plan stated by majority of the people. I see no transparency in this project. I would like to reiterate, we haven't received any notification via mail or email or anything. I think the primary reason why this location is, because it's very unsafe, okay? Because a lot of schools, their daycare, and then there's a Walmart, there is a lot of shopping centers all around. I think right now we have other kids who play there. But I feel once this project is approved, it will be very, very unsafe for the family and also for the kids. So I won't take five minutes, but I just want to reiterate here that I'm opposing this.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Sir Ram, you have five minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks a lot for giving me the opportunity to talk to the, to the city council. So, so my name is Shoram and I live in the Serralyn community and which is, which is bordering the, the, the proposed site for the, for this Home Key project. And I oppose this Home Key project. Like so many people have already spoken in, before me in terms of, you know, like security and other stuff. I think I would like to reiterate the same point. And I would like to get this into the city council agenda as soon as possible so that we all can discuss and then come up with a suitable solution in order to solve this low income group homelessness situation. And thanks a lot for giving the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Is this the Chirag that already spoke?
No, this is Chiraksha. I believe that Chirag who spoke was Chirag Joshi.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead. You have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Chiraksha and I moved into this community a little over a year ago. And again, we, we love our home and this neighborhood and a lot of people around it. You know, this proposal that's there, I, I'm not in favor of it because it undervalues the, the property as well as poses a risk, in my opinion. As, as more homeless folks would move in here and it, it does pose a safety risk. That's my concern. There already, I can see in that neighborhood, there already are many that are, that are on the streets. And so not only is it a, a public hazard with a lot of dirt and filth around the streets, it also isn't a very pleasant sight when you move around. So it, yeah, so I'm in, I'm in a position for that. So I would like to put it in the council agenda that I oppose this.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
That concludes public comment, your honor.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody in the audience like to speak this evening? Under public comment, anybody in the audience?
Mr. Mayor, before we move on to the business of the people, can I?
Council member Bucci.
Thank you, sir. City manager Benun, a reoccurring theme tonight has been. City manager Benun, a reoccurring theme tonight has been the request to have this agendaed at the next meeting at the end of February. But I know that we have a public community meeting scheduled for March ninth. And to be honest, in my experience, those community meetings give us a little more leeway for the back and forth and an open discussion. And I would assume that we would probably put this back on the agenda sometime after the community meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, may I have a few minutes to address this issue, your honor?
Yes.
Yes, I thank you, Councilmember Bucci, for posing that question. I was going to ask the mayor to address his counsel in brief, bring this up briefly. There is a community meeting scheduled for Wednesday, March ninth at 6:30 PM. It'll be held via Zoom. It's hosted by the project applicant, Allied Housing, the service provider of both services, as well as the city of Newark. This would be the forum for members of the public to express their concerns, have an opportunity for questions to be posed and answers provided by staff as well as the project applicant. The success of this project will hinder on the council approving an affordable housing agreement. That agreement has yet to be drafted, negotiated with city staff. But that agreement, if finalized, would be presented to the council at a future date. That council meeting would be after that March ninth community workshop meeting. So in other words, this item will come back to the council and will be presented on the agenda for a future upcoming council meeting. Again, that will happen sometime down the road. I don't have an exact time period, but it will be a few months. So this item will come back to the council and will be discussed openly and publicly and placed on the agenda.
Okay. So we're still under public comment. Anybody in the audience like to speak? Okay, if not, we're going to close the public comment and we'll go to consent calendar. Consent calendar, first ask staff, would you like anything pulled from the consent calendar?
Not this evening, your honor.
Okay, and from the council, would you like anything pulled from the consent calendar? Okay, D six. And ask the public, anything that you'd like pulled from the consent calendar tonight? Okay, so the consent calendar is going to- I'm sorry, city clerk, can you check on the Zoom attendees?
Samantha, did you want to pull something from the consent calendar? Public comment has closed.
Actually, I just wanted to give my opinion along with the residents of Serrar community and Newark community.
I'm sorry, the public comment has closed on that.
You can send an email to the city clerk if you like for the next meeting.
With that, there's no request, your honor, to pull from the consent calendar.
Okay, so then the consent calendar is going to consist of the following items. D dot one is approval of audit demands. D two is approval of the January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two minutes. Item D three is a resolution for acceptance of work with the Silver Gates Construction LP for the 2020-2021 asphalt concrete street overlay program, project twelve fifty. Item D four is resolution for acceptance of work with Bond Lactop Incorporated for 2020-2021 street slurry seal program, project twelve fifty-one. Item D five is resolution for acceptance of work with Green Valley Landscape, procedable of our landscape improvements, project eleven ninety-nine. And would someone like to move that items be approved as recommended by staff with any items approved by resolution or ordinance being numbered consecutively? And that the reading of the title suffice for purposes of introduction or adoption of the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second? Please vote. Hey, motion passes. Five eyes. Okay, item D six, Vice Mayor Hanon.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Benun, I just want to thank you and staff for once again getting an excellent rating on the audit, most recent audit. It shows that the city is in good hands fiscally. And we've done a real good job of managing our funds, including our emergency funds. And I just want to thank staff for outstanding work. And with that, Mayor, I ask that we pass item six.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve of item six. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, please vote. Councilmember Bucci.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
Motion passes, five eyes, please read. Okay. So item E is public, no, yes, public hearings. Okay, and there are no public hearings tonight. Item F is other business, and there is no other business tonight. Item G is city council matters. And with that, I have nothing tonight. I will defer to Vice Mayor Hanon.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to listen to many comments this evening. A lot of those comments were directly directed specifically at you. I just want to take a moment to extend my appreciation and my colleagues' appreciation for the outstanding work that you do in representing our community. I had the opportunity to observe our mayor this last Saturday, sorting thousands and thousands of cans of food products to support the homeless and those less fortunate in our community. This mayor has been a great leader for this city. He does so much work behind the scenes to make Newark the quality city that we've come to know and love. Just want to thank you, Mayor, personally for all the good work you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Councilmember Klayaza.
There we go. You know, your honor, not only do you do the sorting of food cans, but you go out and take care of our graffiti. How many years have you been doing that for?
More than I would care to state.
So we have a great mayor, and I want to thank you, Mayor. And one other little thing is that, you know, I was looking through my Rotarian magazine. And I saw this little page, all kinds of different people, different sizes, different colors, holding hands, united, working together to make this world a better place. And it doesn't matter what color we are. It doesn't matter if you're rich, if you're poor, you help one another. I don't know how you see me. I lived in a one-room house with my family. My parents slept on the bed. My sister and I slept on the floor. Somebody lent us a hand. Maybe it was God. I think we did pretty good for ourselves. Fifty years with the family business, and I'm serving my community, not for the money that they're paying me. But believe me, I could go somewhere else to use my time and make a lot more money. It's for the love of my community to help my fellow citizens here. So to my council members, to my mayor, thank you for working together to make this community a better place. In Shop Newark.
Thank you, Councilmember Klayaza. And Councilmember Bucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lot to unpack tonight. I would, you know, I would just like to tell the people still tuned in that, you know, some of these issues that come up in politics in general can be certainly frustrating and emotional at times. I think we can be also caught up in things happening at the federal and state level. I think that social media plays a big role in the way people talk to each other in a certain amount of decorum that I think most civil and good people would never do in the presence of another person when they disagreed with them. And I would just ask that moving forward, especially with the community meeting and stuff coming up, that we keep that in mind. You know, I'll tell you, me and the mayor have had our own disagreements over the years on the way things should be done and maybe on an item here or there. But, you know, we've persevered and we work together and we've always moved forward for what was best for the community. And even when the mayor and I have disagreed, I never questioned that any decision he was making was because he truly believed it was in the best interest of this community. You know, the mayor has served us well for forty-three years, which is just enough for first place. And on top of being, you know, one of the leads at graffiti abatement and all the other work he does, handing out food and whatnot. He was a founding sponsor for our Newark Cub Scouts. He was one of the early members of the JC. He is a fellow volunteer of the year. And I can tell you, you know, this is a man who has a passion for our city. And while, you know, things can be emotional and certain accusations we made, I can certainly speak to the character of this man. And I think we're in pretty good hands. And I think moving forward, people would be really surprised how much a email or simple conversation could go to maybe understanding where we're coming from or certain issues that tend to get cloudy or muddy as we go through them. And, you know, if you've ever played the telephone game, by the time it makes its way around, the message is always different. So I am certainly looking forward to this community meeting that we're going to be having on March ninth. I will be participating. And I hope that, you know, folks continue to reach out to us via email and things. And, you know, moving forward, I did hear one person really nail it tonight. She said, you know, we're neighbors, and we are. You can often catch me in my sweats at CBS in the middle of the night and other things. So you can find us around town. We are definitely a member of this community. And, you know, I grew up here. I went to snow school, graduated in ninety-six. I have a seven-year-old daughter. So a lot of the concerns that I heard tonight, I share. So it's really a matter of kind of moving forward and seeing the best way we can to address these. But I don't think we can do it without at least keeping in mind that, you know, there's a certain amount of decorum and respect that we can all be showing each other. So I hope to see more of that as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bucci and Councilmember Fredis.
Thank you, your honor. We have five elected officials on this board in here. We, sometimes we have our disagreements, but we are here to support each other on the good and not-so-good moments. But you deserve the total support of the community because you are forty-three years of public servant of this community. You've been doing so great, so I'm behind you a hundred percent, Mr. Mayor, to supporting you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes city council matters. Item H is closed session. And- City clerk Harrington, do we have any requests to speak online in closed session?
We do not, your honor.
Okay, would anyone in the audience like to speak on item H, closed session? Okay, then the city council meeting will now recess and go into a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, titled City Manager.